Excellent. Welcome to everybody. This is the Select Committee to Study Barriers to Survey on See Boards and Commissions. Today is November 8, 2022, and this meeting is starting on time at 7:32. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Beth, can we do a roll call?
Javier?
Here.
Jamila?
Yeah.
Mara, Susan?
Here.
Gwen? Garrick?
Here.
Cynthia?
Here.
And Jenna?
Here.
Just missing one at the moment.
Okay, so I've almost quarrel. This meeting, it's been video and audio recorded and it's being held over Zoom. We're gonna start, we're gonna go right now to the second agenda item, which is public comment. We have 15 minutes every time, every meeting, we have allocated 15 minutes for public comment. So we're gonna wait a little bit, see if somebody comes in interested and doing. And right after that, we're gonna jump into conversation with Megan Pye, Chair of the Human Rights Commission. We're gonna wait a little bit, just in case people, yeah, probably people are saying, you know, they never start on time. So, and they may be through, but so let's just wait.
Or they're glued to their television sets.
Right. Excellent. Having waited and looks like we don't have anybody for public comment, we're gonna move to the next agenda item, which is, again, conversation with the Empire Chair of the Human Rights Commission. Megan, it's really, really good having you here.
Hello, everyone. And my name is Megan Peck. It's not pronounced like it's spelled. From the Human Rights Commission, I was here last week. And I've met most of you. You know that Susan's one of our HRC members. We really appreciate her involvement with your committee, and she's been updating us every, at our monthly meetings too, about your work. So I don't repeat too much of what I said last week in public comments. How much time do I have today?
A fair amount of time. I would say at least 15, 20 minutes.
Okay, great. So we, the HRC over the summer formed a subcommittee to draft a handbook for new commissioners and committee members that we hope can be adapted to all the standing boards and commissions. I was not able to share it last week, but I'm here to do so today. It is, as far as we know, there is no formalized onboarding procedures for any of the volunteer boards and commissions on the city, aside from the the OML training online and swearing in by Pam Powers. And so we really would like to have kind of standardized a set of accurate and consistent information about what we should all be doing, the missions and, you know, procedures and norms of our work. So I'm gonna go ahead and share right now what is so far a four-page document. So right here. And it has been, it has been shared with our, the HRC in October. But I'm really looking forward to your feedback about sort of any sort of emissions or additions to this. So I start here with our municipal government structure. I've asked the mayor's office if there exists a kind of a blue chart or organizational chart that could help us visualize our, you know, our relationship to the, you know, legislative and executive branches. One doesn't exist, but I'm hoping that if not someone on the HRC, then some other, someone else interested in, some other volunteer will be able to create this. So I start with our, our form of government. And some of this language is very much of the language here is fairly boilerplate. It is pulled from the city website. And I've embedded hyperlinks in here. Let me know if I'm going too slowly or too quickly for you.
Megan, can I just ask you, did you do this for the HRC? Or, or your thinking was to adapt it commission committee-wide?
I, well, for both, actually, reasons that we, we talked about last week, yes. So this is a part that is, I think is boilerplate and common to all the boards and commissions, the first page and half or so. And again, this was, these two, this was pulled from paperwork that I got from Pam upon my recent reinstatement. So so these, these questions have come up, I think, for many of, on the HRC members. And but I think this particular section might be particular to us. We don't actually have a city staff liaison, so we operate differently from the other boards and commissions. We don't have that staff support, so we, where I create the agenda and minutes and one thing I didn't write here, didn't include here was also request and schedule special speakers for our meetings. So, all right, so this is the second half of the second page. Here, I'm hoping to have all the committees have more information specific to themselves. This is from the city website. And this makes us different from many other human rights conditions, municipal ones. Third page, I have started the bios for our seven current members.
Javier, did you want to ask a question of Megan?
Yeah. Megan, can you go a little back to the, to the previous page?
Sure, here's two.
So at the beginning, I was gonna ask, what's the role of the Human Rights Commission after you went here? So you said it's an advisory model by member body of the city. Who, who do you advise?
The mayor. And that is, we're, that is, may not be so clarified here, I believe. Well, we, we are in, somewhere it says we're the advisory body to the executive, I believe.
Well, because there are some, there are some, as you know, there are some commissions that can be advisory to the city council, or can be joint advisory too. That's, that's what I'm asking.
Right, right. I don't know if that's the case for the standing volunteer boards and commissions. So yours is, is obviously from the council. And is time limited, right?
And, and the reason why I'm asking is sometimes, and I love, I love this, the fact that you are being, I, I, I wish I would have this the first time that I served. Because I it's implicit that it's implicit but not obvious that recommendations are no more nor less than recommendations. And whatever the recommendation is, may happen and may not happen. And that implies, and that plays a lot into the interest of somebody serving saying, I'm gonna put all this time for after that, my recommendation, you know, not being used or being used partially or, or, you know.
Right.
And I think that's extremely useful. Because we had been talking about people feeling that they don't, they are not gonna, they don't wanna serve, for example, that one of the reasons that Jenna went and seemed to put in their, their question was like, you know, not real impact. Was one of those, right? And I think that speaks really well to set that clear. And a lot of this, I do feel that my thinking should be available even before somebody applies, like even before they get interviewed, like the expectations of, like, you know, this is advisory, you, whatever you guys, you come out as a member, maybe fuller or not, and because I think that's a piece, an important piece for people to say, I'm willing to commit myself to some amount of hours each week to do this, right?
Right, right. And what I'm showing you here is very, very skeletal, is gonna tell towards, you know, dry and perfunctory. And just, you know, it can be adapted for a lot of different commissions, and I think it should be. What and all I have here is really what I think the minimum they, they would want to know, or need to know, post appointment. So some of what you're talking about is the sort of the the sort of training or that they would need to even be interested to, to apply or to join a commission. And that is actually not addressed here at all. But I wish to talk about that sometime too. So if I may, I will just scroll through the rest of this. So I was on page three, here we go, so a brief bio of each of the current members. And then, you know, short description of what, you know, how we conduct the meetings without going into any specific detail. I don't actually think it's very easy to find the archive minutes. I don't even have a hyperlink here. Along with how to contact us. So the fourth page is, you know, it's more dynamic. And eventually, I hope all of this will be hyperlinked, or most of it will be. So at a glance, it shows you what it is we, we did, what we are doing, hope to do. And this list, you know, changes with the composition of our membership and political priorities, et cetera. So does anyone have any media questions? I can go back to any section of it. Again, this is just the, you know, my best understanding of the status quo. And I hope it will it will go through many changes as your recommendations are coming to light.
Yeah, I was noticing that, I think there's a range of authority that councils and commissions have. I mean, I read in the paper today, the planning committee voted to secure this particular location for mixed income. And so that's, apparently, there's a requirement to, to jump jump through that hoop of planning committee for certain things. And I'm not sure if human rights has that, has an authority, you know, and so, or, or some of the other councils and commissions. So it's probably good, I think, for a new member to know what the authority of the committee is, and it might be hidden up above there. Megan, where I was talking about it, it's advisory capacity, or it's a, you know, whatever the intention of the particular committee is. And I just wanted to ask you, is that term strong mayor form of government? Is that, that's just like a boilerplate term, huh? That's what they call it?
Really, yes.
Isn't that, isn't that interesting? But anyway, just a comment.
Right, right. Yeah. And I think that's quite different from even our some of our surrounding municipalities, definitely Amherst.
Well, Amherst is a town.
Or, yeah.
Right. I mean, but, but for example, with Springfield, right? Springfield, and that was sort of, so the comment that I was gonna make. So the first section, when you talk about this, the strong mayor for a government has an elected mayor, that's any kind of city government with a mayor, right? It's not just a strong. You have a weak mayor for a government, which is a good example with Springfield. Which at the end of the day, what makes a strong mayor or a weak mayor, or a strong council or a weak council, is the charter. Right? They, they, the, the reading of the charter in Northampton, actually, in the, in the past couple administrations, is that the council doesn't have the right to tell anybody what to do. In Springfield, we have a council that, because of the charter, has the right to tell departments what to do. Right? And that's, that's sort of the, the way how you define a strong mayor or a weak mayor.
Mm-hmm. Do you have any suggestions about, do you want to incorporate that element?
Jenna has the Jenna has her hand up.
Hi there. This is not about the strong mayor piece of this. I think this is a great document, and as you pointed out, I think a wonderful template for other boards to be able to kind of use and adapt fairly easily. So thank you to the HRC for taking the lead on this on behalf of everybody in the city. I have a couple of comments. One sort of relates back to what Javier said, and this may be outside of the scope. In fact, I think it is outside of the scope of what you're trying to do right now, but the last page, where you talk about the sort of recent and potential topics of focus and activities, to me, this is so critical because reading the, the sort of broad description of what the different boards and commissions do, it's really hard to actually understand what that means, what, what, what's actually going to be happening in the meetings, where do we have authority, what kinds of things might we be talking about? If I'm interested in or have expertise in XYZ does that, or does that not match up with the work of the board? And so this, to me, really kind of gives substance and meaning and meat to that rather purposefully vague description. So I'm so glad that this is here, and I also wonder whether there might be a way to share this information with potential members, because I do think that that's one of the things that's sort of a, a gap in the way that we're recruiting members, is that it's, again, it's very hard to read the, the general descriptions of boards and try to interpret unless you've been to numerous meetings already, what that actually looks like in practice. So again, that may not be a question for you, Megan, so much as a question for, you know, this committee and all of us collectively.
I actually do agree with you, and we have a number of new commissioners who have didn't, have not attended meetings prior to being appointed. And this is actually, comes out of my own experience of having no onboarding whatsoever. And really needing a lot of time before even, I mean, not just understanding what it is that we that is within our priorities, but what we can actually do within the very broad mandate of, you know, promoting human rights in our city. So perhaps at some point, if this is, you choose to add it to your recommendations, and it is adopted by the city, we could link this to the webpage, our individual webpages. Says general education for, for prospective volunteers.
I think that would be great, personally. So, yeah, wonderful. My other comment, and I don't know whether you have any, you know, ideas or suggestions, but one of the things that we've been talking about is the role or lack thereof of not just onboarding, but training in, in getting members oriented to the work of the committee and helping to develop their expertise. And I think as we're looking to expand membership out to a broader kind of swath of the population, I think we also need to recognize that some people may be really interested in getting involved, but don't have expertise, specific professional expertise in the different areas of the boards. And so I think it would behoove all of us to think about, okay, how can we kind of onboard people, not just in the sort of logistics, like what we're looking at here, but in, okay, I want to understand more about this issue, and I want to be able to contribute, what can I read, what trainings can I attend, what other areas, ways can I engage kind of in my free time to try to just sort of develop my, my ability to contribute to the work of the board. So I know, for example, that on the, the planning board, there is a group called the Citizen Planners Training Collective that runs very low-cost training for volunteer members of planning and zoning boards around the state on different aspects of planning and zoning law within Massachusetts. I haven't had the pleasure of participating in any of those trainings yet, but I'm on their mailing list, and I wish somebody had told me about them, you know, when I first joined the planning board. So my question to you is, you know, are there any such, you know, trainings, readings, other things that you think new members could do to engage to just sort of more quickly get up to speed with the issues at hand? And might there be an opportunity to incorporate that in here?
And I can only speak to, you know, the HRC, and I would say there probably are not any sort of prerequisites that would be, other than a commitment to, I hope, the commitment to coming every month as much as they're personally available. And it's unlike the planning committee, planning board, or is it the housing partnership that has an associate membership that kind of kind of actually is part of their onboarding, I believe. We don't, and this might be something that's, I, I think currently is outside of our purview, because we don't have any input into the selection of of candidates that, by the mayor's office.
So I was
Can I, can I just clarify that my my suggestion was not that, not to think about prerequisites for joining the committee, but just whoever sort of shows up at the committee coming out of the mayor's office without your input. Whoever they might be, do you, would you have suggestions for them? You know, if I were a new commissioner and came to you and said, you know, I really want to kind of be able to make a contribution as early as possible, what can I do outside of attending meetings that might help me kind of get up to speed more quickly? So in that context, not a prerequisite, but just a kind of additional optional reading, that part of the syllabus.
Actually, we don't have a lot of work products. I mean, we do, we have hosted a couple of events, but in recent years, we we have done advocacy, we've written some op-eds, but often it appears that we just spend 90 minutes discussing issues and human rights until we have, we're given, I mean, we are actually part of we, it's possible that the council for the council and others to refer legislation for, to us for review, but that has not happened. It is, I guess beyond some familiarity and commitment to the articles and the human rights and, and understanding our procedures. I really don't I really, I really don't and, and you know, I guess, once I, once I hyperlink these topics, perhaps that would be where I could, you know, add this additional information. Is that what you're?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, you know, even just and, and again, it may be that, you know, for your particular board, given your work and, and given how, as you said, how kind of broad your mandate is, that there isn't a lot to do, but maybe a short section that just says, you know, recommendations for new members would be to read some of our past op-eds. If there are any topics in our topics of focus, you know, current or upcoming, that you don't feel like you're particularly well-versed in, you know, do some research, and here are some potential organizations or news sites where you might start, you know, even just a few sentences of, you know, ways to, to get informed, I think would be really helpful. And, you know, certainly, there, I have a little bit of a sort of self-serving purpose in mind by asking this, because I think having that in here, if this is gonna be provided to other boards, other boards may have more concrete suggestions of, of things to do, trainings to attend, documents to read and so forth. So but I think that sounds like a great place to start.
And Susan, who also is commissioner.
Yeah, I, similar to that, I remember when I first joined the Human Rights Commission, and I wrote about one of the resolutions that was on the website. So I know that there are some things that people can read about on the website that helps catch up to what we're doing, and we offer insight before they join our committee. And I think putting some hyperlinks to those would be a great idea, as well as, I know the op-eds that, you know, Ren had written previously before she left the committee, and those kinds of things. Have more of an idea of what we do.
Okay. So we could just maybe make that a little more explicit here on this last page. Okay.
Also, there, so there is a stark difference between a commission that has the charge of give technical and specifically professional opinions in relationship to X, Y, and Z in the city, right? And the Human Rights Commission, or this commission, right? So that's I think it's a great idea to add that section, because that's gonna push either of those two kinds of, of commissions to have to actually to have a specific section that is gonna actually show. Because for me, it's not only that people are sort of gonna learn a little bit of what they have been doing, but also that's gonna show the direction of the committee, of the commission, what they do, how they do it. I'm a little worried about, you know, people having the time to see it and be able to read it. But I, I, I'm gonna sort of go back a little bit. When do you learn? That when there is a vacancy, when do you learn that there is a candidate?
We only, I, I only learn about it, I've only learned about this since I've been chair this year. And that is only if and when the mayor's office contacts us with the name. And it's with the name, um, and it's, um, the last correspondence I received was very, um, very minimal. It's just the name of the person that has applied um, and whether or not I had any opinion about that person. So, um, I can't speak to what any previous chairs have experienced, um, but that is, um, kind of the that's as a level of involvement is expected of me, so.
And as, as, uh, so you had been chair for this year, right?
Yes, I believe since officially since June, but I've been co-chairing for a while before that.
Okay.
So.
So as, as, so, and, and, and this is something, and I, I think this speaks a lot to, to the conversations that we were having. And you can, you know, I, I would love to have your input and even more having in mind the creation of this document. Because I, and, and you can correct me at any point. For me, reading this document speaks to, how can I say this? It speaks to the, I read between lines that you, your commission really wants to be in communication with people before they arrived, before during and after, right? Is that something correct to sort of to say that they're, you know, because as I said, I feel that there is information here that people would need to know even before they decide if they want to be part or not, before they get interviewed by, by somebody from the, from the council, right? Before the mayor calls then, because that's including the last page, right? Which shows, you know, the workload. If it's a technical commission or not, it's a different workload. I don't know, but I would, I would love to hear your sort of opinion about that.
No, absolutely. I, I think it's a, it's a formative and educational and kind of essential. You know, to have this, at least link to the, our public webpage. I, um, we don't have any other way of promoting our, our, our commission other than through word of mouth. And, um, yeah, I think generally, um, there's a lot of, um, there's not a whole lot of understanding about what it is that we do, um, which, um, is mostly promotional and educational in City of Northampton. But I think these topics would actually interest people um, if they knew about it. And since we only meet once a month, um, online, it's really you know, difficult to share this, um, any other way. We're just kind of usually just, you know, sticking to our agendas. So, yeah, I do, um, I do hope that this, a lot of this information could be shared, um, and you know, very, and adapted for, um, whichever boards and commissions, um, find useful. But I don't know if they all have webpages on the city website. Oh, Cynthia?
Um, Megan, would you like to be in a position where you play a more active role in the recruitment of members as you have meetings month to month and see where some of the gaps are and, and in your contacts throughout the community? Do you feel comfortable saying, hey, why don't you put in an application to, to HRC?
Um, for a long while, we've, we had only five members, um, and it was difficult to meet quorum. And Susan knows, uh, but, um, I, I, another unstated priority for the Human Rights Commission is, uh, really diversifying our membership. By race, by gender, um, ethnic backgrounds, um, you know, all the, all the ways we humans are different. Um, and should be representing the city. So, um, yeah, if I did have, I think it would be helpful to have input into the candidates prior to their applications, but, um, I really, I'm really unsure of, I think it's rather inconsistent how that, how members might be recruited or invited into the commissions and boards. So. And I, you know, I'd be happy to share a lot more of this in the surveys to chairs. Um, I don't want to take up too much of your meeting time. But if there's any other questions I can answer about what's been drafted here, again, this is, um, you know, very open to to changes. It's just the first draft. A couple of other things I thought we could add to, to humanize this a bit more is maybe a letter from the chair. Or an FAQ. Do they even feel like there's any, any missing? Anything missing from the first kind of the boilerplate sections?
Megan, do you feel that if, if we ask any member of your commission, they would say, okay, this is, this is the sort of the amount of time that you need to spend on this. This is the amount of time that it takes the Human Right Commission for somebody who is serving. Is that something that you feel is clear or, or not?
Sorry, I'm not really understanding the question. This is
Um, let me rephrase this. So when, when making time commitment, not only make time commitment, but also there are commissions and committees that for example, this one, I'm expecting people to do the things outside. Just the parameters of the one an hour and a half that we do every two weeks, right? So I would, if, if we were established commission and not, uh, you know, a commission, a temporary commission, if somebody asked me what's the workload, I would say, well, we not only meet, oh, an hour and a half every two weeks, we also are expected to do X, Y, and Z outside. Do you feel that in the case of a Human Rights Commission, that could be sort of, uh, written down as part of this document?
I just, in my three plus years here, I feel like that might present as more of a barrier to new members. There haven't been that many that have, um, stayed on beyond the term of two years. Um, and, um, so we haven't had, currently, I think we have two members who have served more than three years out of the seven. Um, and so there's a lot of, I guess, um, kind of renewing our, ourselves and our agendas, um, as people come on and leave. I don't know, um, and you'll have to ask Susan, who has, um, demonstrated, you know, a really high level of commitment and has been much more very involved, given her, her student status, um, about, um, the, the sort of commitment, um, or the expectation to serve on the subcommittees. Um, because that definitely would allow us to, um, to become more visible and to, um, be come, be more, I think, have more influence, um, in the city. What do you think, Susan?
Sorry, I got a little lost somewhere in there.
Okay. So do you think it was, um, do you think the HRC, um, should have this sort of stated expectation that, that members, uh, do work between meetings, between the monthly meetings?
No, 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 that was, that was not the question. The question is, that would be if this one, the one that we are now. This one, if somebody asked me if we were not a commission that is going to end in a couple of months, if we, we were established commission that just keeps going through the years. If somebody asked me, and is this is the commission, I would have to say it's not only the time commitment for an hour and a half or be two weeks, we, we are expected to, you know, to go to the community and actually talk to people. That's this. Now, in your Human Rights Commission dynamic and your own dynamic and your own process and your own meetings and your own thing, do you feel that you can point out to the workload? And that i- 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 and if that's a yes, can be that added to this?
No, I don't think so. Just because of our, um, our, our membership has been very, not, not that stable
Okay.
in my time here. And, um, people do come in with, um, different expectations and understanding about about, uh, what the commission's purposes. And hopefully this will kind of get us on more of a same page, but I think it's, um, it's not something we can do currently.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, I'm in agreement. I think that especially because our commitment within the Human Rights Commission, um, varies so widely. Some people, you know, like just coming to one meeting a month and other people, um, you know, like being on subcommittees and dedicating a lot more time. And so I think that if we set a standard um, or, you know, at least a bare minimum, that might not adequately reflect what you can do within the committee.
Yeah, I mean, one, there are two things, right? One is the one that you say, you know, per minimum, you have to show up. And after that, you, you can say, and you, you will have opportunities if you are willing to do it and engage more observance in subcommittees of co-writing an op-ed, or that's what I mean, right? Because I do strongly feel that people should be able to know and what they are getting into. Because the, the lack of understanding in what they are getting into, and not only about the basis and the understanding of the specific committee, but also in the time commitment. Right? And, 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 and yeah, there is a, there is a difference between the expectation of it, which is sometimes pretty baseline. And the possibilities of people being able to, you would be able to lead a group in a conversation, X, Y, and Z, you would be able to co-write something. That's sort of a, the opportunities while serving because are not mandatory, right? And I do feel that that can be stated.
If Javier, you or other committee members have those suggestions, um, please do email me at this address here.
Thank you so much, Megan. Is there any other question for Megan from the, our Black Committee?
Thank you again, Megan, for that, for doing all that.
Yes, thank you.
Um, I, as we, um, I expect to discuss this with, uh, the HRC commissioners, um, at least until the end of the year. Um, at some point, would you like to have a finalized version of this? For, okay.
Absolutely.
Review, alright?
Absolutely.
Great. And I'll be in touch about that.
Thank you so much. And, and probably tomorrow, I'm going to be looking for the yard signs, collecting early morning for people to know. I think there's, there's a couple of people here that, that resonates. So, uh, yes.
Wait, uh, Gary. Actually, alright, so first of all, again, Megan, thank you for putting this together. I think this is excellent. Uh, this is something we all need. Um, and, and hearing from you, um, I'm thinking, because I, I am one of the City Services Committee. And you reached out to me before about someone who came before me to interview. And now I'm thinking, would you enjoy, or do you think other chairs would enjoy having someone from City Services reach out to the chair before they do interviews? For, for questioning or something?
You know, I, I would certainly really embrace that involvement. Hope this doesn't, um, create more work, but generally these things do. I think that would be helpful, even just like, um, you could, I think it's helpful to start the onboarding at the City Services Committee stage. And it really depends on who the counselor is, and that we have a number of members who said they actually haven't been contacted prior to. I don't know if it's just because they weren't unable to be reached or, um, it was some other reason, but, um, they didn't get that introduction, um, from the counselors, um, but yeah, that would be, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. I, I, I would just say that I, I thoroughly enjoy doing the interviews. It's a great chance to talk to people who are willing to commit themselves to service of the city. And so, uh, you know, I, I too think of these opportunities as ways to connect all the web together. So, um, cool. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Megan.
Welcome. I will go off camera and try to listen to most of your meeting if I can.
Excellent. So we're gonna move to our next agenda item. And I just realized that I skipped one, which is, uh, approval of minutes from previous meeting. I know there were some, uh, hold on, I'm looking here. Uh, but do you get the corrections that Jenna sent?
Um, I did. I am definitely going to have to um, listen to the, the Zoom recording to get some clarification on those things. Um, and I haven't been able to get access to it. Um, yet there's, it seems that it, that the recording gets sent to the person who hosted the meeting, which as you know, has been several different people over time, and they have the ability to share it, but nobody shared them with me. So I only have like the one that I've, or the two that I've got. And it's not for this October meeting. Plus I still need some counseling to figure out how to post where those meeting, where those Zoom recordings are supposed to be made public. Um, both Jamila and Javier have asked where they can see them and, and I don't know yet. Um, I know where they could be seen when, uh, pre-Zoom times, you know, before everything went remote. But I don't know, I know there are, there's a place, but we have not posted anything there yet. So I need to gather them all from whoever has them and then post them somewhere. But in the meantime, I'm just going off my notes, um, that I take during the meetings. And so, um, several of Jenna's, uh, questions, comments involve things that I can't answer. I mean, I've looked my notes over again and I can't answer them without reviewing the whole recording. Um, because that's the, you know, I take as good notes as I can, but I can't catch every word from everybody. Um, so.
So what, so what about?
Either if people have reviewed the minutes, then we, you know, we could approve them with potential amendments or maybe not. Maybe I need to get this information. I'm not sure how that works actually.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer to have the the minutes amended and then approved.
Okay.
Which, so we would, and also we didn't get the minutes from last week, right?
Correct.
So that, that would means that for the next meeting in tomorrow weeks, we are going to need the minutes from October 11 amended and the minutes from last week, right?
Yep.
Is there any, is any, uh, objection to tabling, uh, the minutes until we get a final version from October 11 minutes? And, uh, the first draft of the minutes from last week? Okay. No opposition to it. Excellent. So, um, eight twenty-one, we have two things that we need to talk today. The next, it's, uh, first, it's going to be Jenna. I, I got your email. I fully hearted agree with you. So I, I would appreciate if you sort of can lead that section with the, using the document that you sent me. But also we need to be thoughtful because we need at least fifteen minutes to be able to talk, to be able, to be able to decide, uh, time, how, how much of an extension we're going to be using. We're going to need to vote in that extension in this meeting. in this meeting. And, um, and that one is gonna go to the next city council meeting where myself, uh, Garrick and Jamila are gonna present the petition of the extension. I was told by Jim that the three of us, so I'm not volunteering anybody, somebody else volunteered. He says, well, you know, Consulor Perry and Consulor Gore are gonna be there, so the three of you, he said, okay. So, okay, Jenna, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna give you from eight twenty-three to, uh, eight forty-five. Excellent.
Okay. So, um, yeah, so at the last meeting, I volunteered to go through the questions that various committee members had proposed for our survey for chairs, members, and applicants of committees to try to kind of consolidate them. And I sent a draft of that over to Javier earlier today, which I will now share with all of you. Yes, okay. Um, so, uh, I'm just gonna try to kind of do this as quickly as I can, kind of high-level changes that happened. The only thing that I changed materially to this early section was just a little note about how long the form would take to complete, just for kind of expectation setting for folks. And I also added a note here just to remind people that if, not to choose one of these to get into the form if they are in fact none of these things. So if they haven't, they're not serving, haven't served, haven't applied, this is not the form for them, that we still want their input, but in a different venue. So that that's kind of stated right up front. I then, I sort of separated out the questions into four sections. So let me just go through what they are briefly and then go back in more detail. So the first is about applying for a board. The second is about serving on a board. Then the process of filling board vacancies, and then some kind of general recommendations and comments. And to me, that order sort of A allows us to flow neatly, hopefully, through branching, depending on respondents and what sets of questions they should or shouldn't get, but also about a kind of logical progression of, okay, I first learned about this board, I applied, I went through that process, then I was appointed, then I served, then I became chair. That's a sort of trajectory that makes sense, as opposed to having all the questions kind of scattered throughout. So in each section, there's just a little note about who the questions apply to. So it's the section on applying is for everybody, chairs, members, and applicants. Again, I'm just gonna try to go through this super quickly. So how did you find out about the vacancy? What motivated you to apply? How strongly do you agree or disagree with these statements about the process? And then a kind of open-ended question about how to improve the process. For applicants, they would bump from this section to the end. So they will end up with about six questions. And the most questions that anybody would have is fifteen. Uh, the second section, serving on a board, is just for chairs and members. How long total have you served on North Hampton City Boards and Commissions? Choose your total cumulative years of service. So one of the things I put in my email today, I realized as I was working on this, is that many people, including I, almost everybody on this commission, perhaps everyone, has served on more than one board. And maybe kind of concurrently serving in this current time. And so when I thought about filling this out myself, I thought, well, should I fill it out, you know, with my, just my planning board hat on, or sort of with all of them? How would I, uh, compile the number of years of service? What, which experience or experiences should I talk about? Because it's not, you know, my, my, how I found out about the vacancy for the planning board is different from how I found out about the vacancy on this commission and so forth. I would really welcome input on that. I'm not sure that it's an easily reconcilable issue. So this is the only question where I attempted to address it currently by just saying total cumulative years of service. So for me, I would add, you know, planning board plus select committee, even though two of those are happening simultaneously. So again, serving on a board, how long have you served? What are the benefits of your service? What are the barriers or challenges to your service? This is a new question that takes other questions that other, that had been previously separate and pulls them into one. Again, trying to just make it easier for people to respond and have fewer open-ended questions about kind of the experience of serving. So, so previously, there was a, somebody had added a question, do you feel valued and listened to? Have you received special training for your role on the board? Do you spend a lot of time about your, on your board's work outside of your meetings and so forth? So I sort of turned all of those into question, into statements that somebody could, you know, agree or disagree with, in the style of other questions in the survey. And both about the person's own service and about their kind of general feelings about the board in general, as well as this question, or the statement that board members should or shouldn't be compensated. Um, I also will just note that I moved some questions from the section for chairs into the section for members. Some of these are fall into that category, because I felt like they were relevant to more than just chairs. The third section is about filling board vacancies just for chairs. And when I say chairs, again, going back to our conversation last time, that may also include co-chairs. But we think that those are the only folks who know about this, if they know about it at all. So a couple of open response questions, what is the process for filling vacancies? What would you be looking for as chair in a new member? Does the mayor's office consult with you? And much like was asked of Megan today, would you prefer that the mayor's office consult with you more than they currently do? And then again, a kind of open-ended question about how could this process be improved? And then finally, this last section, which everybody will get, is just open-ended. You know, how can we reduce barriers to service? And if you want to upload a longer testimony, please do so. I then wrote a little bit about just a kind of thank you message about the you know, again, if you want to learn more, or, you know, elaborate, or whatever, here is reiterating information about our meetings. I went back and forth about, I don't actually have the questions that, a list of the questions we were playing on, asking on demographics. I understand not wanting to include that here, so, because it will tie people's information to their responses. But I'm concerned that if we make it as a completely separate form, we're just not gonna get a demographic profile of our respondents, which itself is gonna skew the results. So I don't know how to maybe include it here, but make it optional and reiterate the, the, a reminder that, you know, if people are really worried about not being tied to their response to, that it's voluntary. But I think it might, personally, on balance, I think it would be easiest to have it all in one form and give people the chance to opt out, rather than trying to then direct them to another form to complete in a different place. So that's what I have. I tried to capture as much as I could while making it much shorter and reducing the number of open response questions. So, yeah, welcome, uh, feedback and input. I know it's kind of a lot to look at on a screen, but that's what I've got.
Can you talk a little bit, uh, Google Form versus JOT Form?
Oh, yes. So, um, I only had a little bit of time to look into this, but the way that branching seems to work in Google Form is that you can only kind of do it once. So I think, I think we could sort of budget in Google Form, but I think we'd have to do it in reverse order here. So it's manageable, but again, to me, there's a sort of logical flow to this, that doing it in the reverse order would, would interrupt somewhat. Without kind of getting too much into the technical details, basically, I think we would have to start with the general responses, then move into, for the chair, it would start with general responses, then talk about vacancies, then talk about serving, and then talk about applying. So kind of backwards of, of how they actually went through the process. So it's doable, but as far as I can tell, you can only branch people once. So I think that's the only way we could do it. JotForm looks like you could do it multiple ways, so that we could retain this order. So I'm willing to look into that more if people are open to it. But again, I didn't, I didn't have a ton of time to spend on that particular piece, but that was my first impression. And I guess I will just add that on the, on the point of, you know, people who are serving on multiple boards, we could potentially include an opening statement that says something about that, you know, either tell people, you know, try to summarize your experience, talk about the most recent board you applied to, the one you feel most committed to, I mean, take your pick of kind of what we most want to know, or we can just leave it vague and people will respond how they respond. I mean, I think if I were to fill this out and I were not the one designing it, I would probably try to kind of summarize all of them and somewhere describe that that's what I was doing. But again, without making it really complicated, I'm not sure. Or asking people to fill it out three different times, with their three different hats on, I, I'm not sure how to fix it. Cynthia?
Yeah, Jenna, thank you so much. This was really great work, great thinking. And my question, I think it applies to what we were talking about last week, and you may have gone over it really quickly here, but I just want to confirm it. When you're when you're querying the member, someone who is on a board, do they have the opportunity to talk about their application process?
Yes, everybody, everybody will get this first set of questions.
Okay, great.
Including chairs and members.
Great. And then, um, does the beginning of the form explain who we are and what we're doing? I just didn't see that. Yeah.
Yes.
Good, good, perfect. And then, um, is there a place, and I, I remember the question that you said, do you want to tell us anything else? But is there open-ended, um, opportunities?
So the, I believe that every section except one ends with an open-ended question. So the applying for a board, how can you improve the process? Filling board vacancies, again, how can you improve the process? And then finally, you know, generally, how can we reduce barriers to service? And the final question is just, if you have more to say, you can do so here. And it would be, of course, very easy to add another, an open-ended question to the, this section about serving to say, you know, something to that effect. Just, you know, what would make your experience of serving better, or something like that, if if people felt like that was useful?
Great, great. And do we have, I know we have it somewhere, but is there an N? You know, like, what's the total number of members? I know we know have the total number of boards and commissions, but are we talking about a hundred people here, do you think? Does anyone know?
Isn't it like a hundred and eighty?
Okay.
I think it's in the resolution. Hold on, I'll look.
Okay. Or, or slots, maybe?
Yeah, it's possible to be a hundred and eighty-eight.
Okay, po- uh, potential positions.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Jamila. And so we just don't know how many are vacant, how many are, yeah. So it'll get, just, just for our tracking purposes, to see when it's, how it's coming in, you know, we hit twenty percent, we hit thirty percent. I don't even know what number is good. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, I like, um, I like what you did here, at a brief glance, obviously. But I trust the work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Excellent. So, you know, this at, at the end, it's sort of a, a mix of what everybody did, and this looks incredible. Is JOT Form paid?
There's a free version and a paid version. And I think that is one thing that I will need to look into, is if it, I know some free survey products have a maximum number of respondents. We certainly wouldn't want to have to turn people away. So I can, I will try to look more into what capacity it has in the free version.
Okay. Excellent. Is there any comment in relationship to, to the content? I mean, it looks fantastic. It's just literally. So is there any other comment in relation to content? I mean, excited that we got to this point.
How do people, people feel about the demographics question? Because again, I, I believe, and Javier, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that one of the proposals that we've been or ideas we've been floating around was to have that be an entirely separate form, so that demographics weren't linked to responses.
Yes, so the, so the demographics section was stuck under then context, because we had the feeling that it was gonna be, if, if we put it all together, it was gonna look way too long. In the way how this is branched out, I don't think it's gonna good, look too long embedded within the main form. So that's, that's one thing. Cynthia?
Yeah, I just, just a thought. I mean, I know the demographics are very, very important. But I also know our committee is not charged with solving world hunger. And I think that it's the city's responsibility, and I'm, I'm already starting to make our list of recommendations for a final report, that when anyone comes on board to serve, that there should be a capturing of that individual's demographics. So that when we go away, there's an oversight to see, you know, what those demographics are. And if there's any hint of anyone feeling ostracized or isolated because we're asking for demographics, because their anonymity would be violated, that would concern me. So I just offer that. I, I, I totally agree. It would be wonderful if we could capture that. But do, do we want to, if it, if we're sacrificing something else? And it's just, and I can go either way on this, I just wanted to raise that point.
Cynthia, do you feel like if we sort of included demographics as a section, but before the question stated up, you know, upfront, this is entirely optional, and if you don't want your demographic information tied to your responses, feel free to skip it. Would that sort of satisfy your concerns?
Yeah, definitely. And knowing that, you know, we may not get a true picture, right? By doing that, but I think the sacrifice of that is, is better. I would, I would be more interested in the goal of getting as many responses as we can with as few restrictions and sensitivities as possible. And then look at demographics as something that's embedded in the city structure in the future. But I think that's a, I think that's a great idea, Jenna.
So maybe if, if other people agree that that will allow us to sort of split the difference of if people are willing to share, we get a little bit of data. If they aren't, that's okay, you don't need it, and they can sort of protect their anonymity. Javier, do you have a list of the, I know we've talked about some various demographic questions, and can you send that to me? You're muted.
I have it, and I can send it to you.
Great.
Excellent. Excellent. So so, so we need to, well, Jenny's gonna log into the JOT Form. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to make it work that. And, but the content itself, it's as far as I'm concerned, and please, um, uh, members can make a comment. I think we're pretty close to be done with the content of the form. Looks extremely clean. This is an amalgamation of what everybody put together with sort of the genius of Jenna making it work together, which is fantastic. I honestly, when I tried to go for it, it was like, after five minutes, every single thing looked just like the same. So, and I like this. Even it's, um, it's visually pleasing. Excellent. So I will send you Jenna the, the tour survey that we have in relationship to the general questions. Excellent. Is any other thing in relation to this? So we move to the conversation of extension request.
I just have a logistics question. Once I have the demographics and can kind of get those into the document, whether we're doing JOT Form or Google Whether we're doing Jot Form or Google Form, do you want me to just go ahead and build it or can I get edited and access? Okay.
No, go ahead of Bill because because this is something that you're doing only by yourself. You can just do it.
Okay.
Cynthia?
And then if we could put on the next agenda to talk about how that gets distributed. And disseminated. I don't know the best way of doing that. So just want to make sure we. Talk about that logistical piece.
Yes. Excellent. Hold on, I lost the agenda. Here it is. If we can do in two minutes. Assignments, updates, I would love that. Or we can, we can table it for next meeting because I, Jenna, you have done it. I was going to say about the word, but a lot of work. And. And I think when we come out of this, Gary and Cynthia will have way more actually to be able to plan. For what we were talking. So I think we should table reports now. And jump into. The discussion about the extension. Is that okay with everybody? Excellent.
Can I just ask, I have one small question. The event that Cynthia and Garrick are planning is called a listening session. You had a special term for it. Is listening session, correct?
It was, I was just throwing out options. We either can do public comment. Or we can do something called a forum.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. So I don't think we'd say listening session. So the forum is really. An open meeting with a purpose and it can be back and forth.
Great.
But it doesn't have to be. So we can construct it however the group would like it to be. Yeah.
Okay, I reference it in the document. That's why I'm asking. So I called it a listening session because I just couldn't remember. So I'm going to replace that with public forum and it's it's sort of a broad statement, like there might be another survey, there might be a forum, come to a meeting. So I think that'll sort of cover our bases. Thank you.
Unless unless the city counselors that are present can tell me if there's another word that's used, you know, like when we're talking about Main Street or all these other forms. I I think it's a forum.
You can call it whatever you want to call it.
Okay, cool.
Listening session?
It's too touchy feely.
Will listen.
Okay. Whatever. Thanks for asking, Jenna.
Okay. Javier, did you just, did we table both B and C, the assignment updates and the discussion about outreach?
Yeah.
Being tabled?
Yeah, because both makes more sense to have it with the final version of this. And as Cynthia said, when we have this next meeting, it's gonna again be on the on the agenda. To talk about how this is sent out to the. To the word, right? Excellent. So we talked a little bit. Last time. About extension and I I, as far as I know, this conversation should be. Short and sweet. And we talk about a possible extension to. At least April. Or not, was it April? So I want to sort of open the conversation. Whatever we decide, whatever we decide here, we're going to vote and I will draft. A request that is going to be presented by me, Garrick and Jamila on City Council. So I want to open it. We were talking about towards the end of. April, somebody mentioned even May. I just want to open the floor for for discussion. Jamila?
When was, when, what was the original date we were supposed to have? Have it done back, you know?
As far as I know, it's at the end of November.
Originally, the report was supposed to be presented at October twentieth.
October twentieth. We are over time.
Well. So I forgot to raise my hand with the. Oh, sorry. I just wanted to to note that when we were charged with. Our our task that Council President Nash and Council Vice President Foster made explicit that they wanted us to take the amount of time we needed. So I don't feel like. You know, we have to worry if people are going to hem and haw about us needing more time. You know, we are still in in the midst of a pandemic and and whatnot. So. I I personally. Welcome the extra time, you know, we're going, we're going to need. We reach out to the community and and who knows if just one forum or listening session will be enough. So I want to give us ample time to, you know, if we do something, maybe we could do a follow up. So. That that's my opinion.
And I would, I would think the sequencing is. Thank you. I think the sequencing is getting the survey out. Digesting those results, which kind of gives us a direction. For the forum. So. So just thinking in terms of time and plus we had those speed bumps in the beginning. So like like Eric, Councilor Garrick. Was saying, Council Perry, otherwise known as Garrick, was saying. I don't think there'd be such a problem asking for an extension, but I didn't realize that the report was due on October twentieth. So wow. Thanks for asking, Jamila. In short, I support the extension.
Jamila?
No, at our last meeting, Gwen had thrown out the date of April fifteen. I don't know how people feel about that.
April fifteen? Okay, so. Jamila, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I I make a motion to extend until April fifteen.
To request an extension to?
To request an extension till April fifteen.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Cynthia, second. Beth?
Javier, how do you feel about an extension to April fifteenth?
Let me think about it. Yes.
Jamila?
Yes.
Mara, Susan?
Susan had to go.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Garrick?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
That's five yeses. Which at this point is unanimous.
Excellent. Sorry, I'm I'm getting a lot of text messaging with the results of the. Different races. Excellent. So I'm going to draft. A letter. And I'm going to check with with Jamila and Garrick. So we presented in the next city council meeting. And I already talked to Jim that. He's going to add us in the next city council meeting to the agenda. So we can, we can do it. Is there any other things moving to new businesses? Is there anything? That we need to talk besides whether we have talk and also table for the next meeting? Jenna?
Just on the topic of the extension, I think it was Cynthia last time who suggested we might. Present a timeline alongside the request for the extension. I don't know whether that's happened and I agree with others that I don't, I don't foresee the council saying, nope, you're shut down. You know, work is ceased, but just. Wanted an update on on. That and whether we can present something, not even necessarily a timeline, but just for these initiatives we have in place and where we things see things going from here, I think might might help keep the council informed.
Yes. So the idea of the the content of the letter would be where we are. What's to come? The sort of the presumed time that for us to be able to receive the responses from the form. For us to be able to process that. Plus the. Listening event, whatever people want to call it. And sort of specify that these are the things that this is, this are, these are the things that. Not necessarily the time and when they're going to happen, but this is what it's going to happen between now and April fifteenth by the time we're submitting the report. Is that okay? Excellent. Excellent. Any other comment?
And we'll get a copy of that letter, Javier. I'm going to assume.
Yes. I Beth, do you know when the next up? Jamila, also, I'm going to use their their different hat, Council Perry and Council Gore. When are you having your next meeting?
November seventeen.
November seventeen. Hold on, I'm adding. Yeah, so. So we're not meeting again until the twenty second. No, yeah, until the twenty second. So you will get a copy of the letter. But. It's just as you're going to get it as a final draft in informational. That's the reason why I, because if we, if our next meeting was before the city council meeting, we would have been able to workshop it. But because it's not going to happen in that way, that's going to be the final version. Excellent. I think this is it for today. Eight fifty four. Enjoy. The fun time, five more minutes in in your in your night.
Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
My second.
Excellent.
Javier?
Yes.
Jamila?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Unanimous number five yeses.
Excellent. Thanks, everybody, and see you next meeting.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.